He says we're good.
Fire away. Okay, it's seven o'clock.
Good evening. I call to order this regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions. And I will begin with a few introductory comments. My name is Bonnie Duffy. I am the Chair for the Minnehaha County Planning Zoning. And Kurt Johnson is here for the Sioux Falls Planning Commission. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minnihahacounty.org site for viewing by the general public. The two Planning Commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural area surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. When this joint hearing is completed, the Joint Sioux Falls and County Planning Commission will adjourn and the next regular business meeting will begin to consider items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction with Sioux Falls. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, December 5th at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the Joint County Commission and City Council for a hearing on Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, at or after 5:00 p.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Joint meetings of the County Commission and Sioux Falls City Council are held in the Carnegie Town Hall and that is located at 235 West Tenth Street. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 26th, 2022, meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the Planning Commission or the audience. If any member of the Planning Commission or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the September 26th, 2022, meeting. Item number two is Conditional Use Permit 22-81 to allow a kennel on the property legally described as tract A of Shatters Edition. It's the east half, the southwest quarter, Section 28, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is located in Benton Township. The petitioner is Jeremy Shellhouse. He's also the landowner. Location is 468-46, Highway 38. You want to make a comment on this, sir?
Yes, I'm a...
Okay, okay. We will just move that then to the regular agenda.
Okay.
And then you'll have your opportunity. Okay, the only item I have on the consent agenda then is the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the minutes.
All second thought.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 26th, 2022, meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City Commissioners, the county has just approved the minutes from the September 26th, 2022, meeting. Can I have a motion on the city side?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion for approval and a second for the minutes from the prior meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved on the city side.
Thank you. Okay, since item number two has been moved to the regular agenda, Mason?
Good evenings, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. As explained, Conditional Use Permit 22-81 would allow a kennel on the subject property. A kennel is defined in the Joint Zoning Ordinance with the City of Sioux Falls as any premise or portion thereon where cats, dogs, or other household pets are raised, trained, boarded, harbored, or kept for remuneration. And this operation would be for the raising and breeding of dogs. The petitioner has explained that there would not be regular visits to the property by customers and that a majority of the dogs will be transported out of state in order to be sold. Additionally, the petitioner has stated that they will be constructing a new accessory building on the property, which I believe I included here. I did not, actually, which will be where the kennels are located and that will be in this portion of the property, right where this accessory building is here. That will be replaced with a new accessory building. Additionally, currently there is limited residential development in the area, but there is the vacant Shatters Fourth Edition, which is an eight-lot subdivision to the west. You can kind of see it in the site plan here. As of now, no houses have been built on this addition, but there is one currently under construction and most of them have been sold at this time. Given that the property is accessed off of a paved highway, the increase in traffic should not be a concern in this area and most of the dogs will be sold off-site, which will also limit traffic concerns. This request was also sent to the city planning staff for additional comment and they did not provide any additional comment and deferred to the county recommendations. With every Conditional Use Permit, planning staff looks at six criteria to see if the permit meets these criteria. Number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. As explained, the property is currently in an area with limited residential development, but there could be in the future. But the residential development in the area is limited to building eligibility, so it's not rezoned to rural residential. So that eight-lot subdivision uses most of the building eligibility within the surrounding area. So most other area, most other land in this area will remain agriculture, except for that eight-lot subdivision. Number two is the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Same thing, as of right now, it's mostly agriculture and will be residential in the future. And given that the rest of the vacant property in the area is more than likely to remain agricultural in use, the proposed kennel on a large agricultural lot should not have a heavy impact on the surrounding area. Number three is that the utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. This property is fully developed with an existing dwelling and multiple accessory buildings. The petitioner will be building a new accessory building to house the kennels for this operation and all necessary utilities such as electricity will have to be extended to this new accessory building. Number four is that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met for the operation. And given that this is a 10-acre property, the parking requirements for the kennel and for the single-family dwelling can be met by this large property. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. This would be the biggest condition for a kennel, given that a kennel does have the potential to produce offensive noise with barking dogs. However, keeping the dogs inside overnight should reduce potential noise nuisances and any public nuisance violations will be addressed upon the planning department receiving any complaint with, in terms of barking dogs or any other complaint. Number six is that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. Given the proper supervision and conditions, the kennel should not overly affect the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. And the subject property is located within the transition area between Hartford and Sioux Falls. And one of the main goals of the transition area within the comprehensive plan is to protect the rural character of the county until municipal development arrives. This kennel does not negatively or positively impact, it has no effect on the rural character of the county. So it doesn't necessarily affect that goal of the transition area. Therefore, given with that, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit 22-81 with six conditions, and I can read those conditions or I'm available for questions if you have any.
I do have a question. So the property to the right, is that a residential or what is that? That seems to be right next to the property line.
This one?
Yep.
I couldn't tell when I went, when I visited the property. It almost looks like if it is a house, it might be a shouse, shed house. It looked more, I would assume it's probably some sort of residence, but it looked like it also could just be a shop, I guess, with a small residence in it.
So with that, if that is residential, is there going to be some type of like noise, you know, like bushes or trees or anything between there that are going to be required?
Yeah, so they did, there are the existing trees and they will be... I don't think they're planning on putting any more additional trees to the east of it. But they do have, so that won't necessarily protect the person to the east, but most of the dogs will be inside, like I said, overnight. And most of the dogs won't be outside anyway because they will more than likely be puppies for most of the time they're on the property. So they'll be kept inside the temperature control accessory building for majority of the time they're on their property until they're sold.
Do we, so do we know what type of zoning that is?
The property to the east, it's A1 agr, or yeah, it's A1 agriculture. Thank you.
Chair?
Go ahead.
Can I also ask you a question?
Go ahead.
In the, is there, in the Minnehaha County rules, is there a limit to the decibels of noise that cross the property line? Is that how you kind of manage the irritation to neighbors or is there some other objective measurement?
With, I guess, with some home occupations in the county, we usually use the 60 decibel at, measured at the property line, which is usually like a normal conversation like we're having now. That's not an actual rule. That's just usually what we use for like the home occupation rules. If it goes, if it's measured at 60 decibels at the property line, that can constitute a nuisance. But if someone decides that the barking dogs are too much for them, we can, and they think that it's a nuisance to them, we can certainly go out and check it even if it isn't at that 60 decibels.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him? I guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, sir, and state your name and address?
Jeremy Scallus, 468-46, South Dakota Highway 38.
Anyone have any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Doug.
Just about how many dogs do you think you might have there on the grounds at one particular time?
We're not 100% sure right now. We're, we have three breeding dogs that we're doing right now. We've done for probably 10 years. And we're in the process of, or my parents, I guess, are in the process of quitting their dog business and so then we're now looking forward to taking that on. We're not 100% sure at this point how many dogs it will be. Overall, we're kind of looking in the neighborhood of 16 lab or retrievers that we would be housing for adult dogs between, mixed between male and female.
Anyone else?
Oh, good.
Go ahead.
What sort of construction are you planning for, like the exterior wall and roof? I don't know that there's a specific construction requirement normally for the county, but I imagine to help control sound, there will be some.
Well, right now, we've been looking at different kennel designs and the latest one that we've been looking at is based on one for Dakota or the tumbleweed lodge, where they have a kennel system, probably a little bit bigger than this, that the kennel and the runs are completely inside and then they insulated all the walls around. And then they have a exercise area outside that about a half an hour in the morning, half an hour at night, they'll go run around and then they're back in. We're kind of leaning towards that same type of thing where it's going to be a Morton-type of building with steel sides, but then insulated on the inside with something that will probably, will try to get that limits noise a little bit because we don't want barking either. I mean, we'll be the closest to it and we don't want to hear that all the time either. So we'll, we'll be, we've been looking at like baffles up in the ceiling to type of eat up noise that way, playing a radio at night that, or all day long so that maybe that'll hinder outside noises that they won't bark at, having solid walls so that they can't see outside there to bark at other things, being able to run around, exercise, and then get tired and go inside. So there will be some barking probably while they're outside during that short time period, but that's not going to be, I think in the, in the conditions, it said between nine and seven in the morning. Would not be during that time. We would not be having them outside, so. It'll be insulated. We were doing a heated floor, so that's how we were planning to heat the building. And, and as far as the seal, the outside will just be tin and, and we were thinking about trying to get some light. I don't know if we'll have windows around it or, but they won't be windows that would be low enough that they could see anything outside, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
A question for you. Do you know that the neighbor or whatever the building is to the right, do you know if that's a house or?
It's a shouse. That'd be Rod Goman. He lives right next to us. We've been in contact with him about what we're planning to do. He knows what's going on. He said good luck at this meeting. He's been planning to build a house further to the east, but hasn't done that thus far. So he might just keep staying in the shouse, but he didn't have any concerns for, for us, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Okay, step forward, state your name and address.
Dave Poem, Sioux Falls. Probably a good question to ask would be if he does have any outside runs, are they going to be to the west or to the east?
Sir, will you step forward and address that, please?
I guess right now the plans aren't to have any runs outside at all. Originally, when we were planning, we were thinking of having runs that were going north to south. So that if they were going to see anything, they'd be the trees to the, to the north or the front of our place. But I think we've kind of passed that, that part of having outdoor runs, other than just having the outdoor exercise area that I think that's where we're at right now.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Sir? Please step forward and state your name and address.
My name's Rich Holm. I'm, the property, I don't know what he's talking about yet, off to the left. I've been there 38 years. I'm concerned about the valuation of my property, the noise, and possibly the smell. He's calling it a confinement. Is it kind of like a hog confinement or? I don't know. What are we going to do with the waste? The belt behind us too is, is there, it's more of a rural residential, you might say anymore. It used to be just the farm that he's living on and us out there back 38 years ago. And now it's kind of changed where it's more, there's going to be a lot of people out there, a lot of activity. And we don't really need any more noise. That's my feeling. I think anybody in here would probably feel the same way if they were living where I'm living. It's been relatively quiet. I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Sir, would you care to address any of those items that?
Yep.
He questioned?
I guess, for one thing, I guess I'm, I'm surprised he thought it was relatively quiet. We, it, I, we've had a little bit of issue between me and him in the past, I guess. So I'm not surprised there's, there's an issue now. But anyways, for manure handling aspect, we're planning to do a, a septic syst, septic tank in the ground where the manure would come into that and shouldn't be smelling. We do have calves. We are an agricultural area. I don't know if smell is a big concern, at least for the dog ends of things. The cattle there smell a little bit already. They have manure that we have to handle with that too. We throw that out in the pasture, which I guess maybe other people don't like either, but it is an ag area. And I think I've tried to address any type of noise that might be coming from this, especially from, I guess, his location. It's about, I mean, I could go on the other side of the trees to get further away, but that'd be, that'd be kind of difficult. So I, I guess I've tried my best to alleviate any types of those issues.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else care, in the audience, care to address this item? Yes, I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mason that I didn't think about. Mason, what are our guidelines for having the approach paved, since it's going onto a paved road?
So we only require paved access onto a paved road if it's a commercial or industrial property. In terms of requirements in the ordinance, if you would like to make that a requirement on this Conditional Use Permit, you could, but it's not a requirement in the ordinance.
Thank you.
I got a question too.
Go ahead.
So let's just say, dog-wise, how many dogs with this building built, how many dogs could he have on the property or in that, that building?
That's, I guess that's a good question. If there's going to be 15 adult dogs and you say, I don't know, a litter is four to five, maybe, that's 45 to 60 dogs inside at one time. Maybe they might not all have the litter at one time, so it might be less than that, but that could potentially be the total. In terms of what, how many, the size of the building hasn't been fully determined yet in terms of how big he's going to end up building, the accessory building. So that could change based on how many dogs he ends up doing, if that makes sense.
So there, we don't have any ordinance or anything on rules on, you know, how many dogs could be in place there?
Not, there are no limits in the kennel, but like again with the hard surfacing requirements, if you guys want to say that there can only be a certain amount of dogs on the property at one time, that's a little hard to enforce just as a warning, just because if they accidentally have, or not accidentally, but if they get multiple litters at once and they accidentally have 30 and the limit is 25, that's hard to enforce, but.
So one question, I guess, what happens, you talked about 60 decibels. If there is a noise complaint, someone calls in, you go out there, it's above 60 decibels, there's nothing in the ordinance or rules that really give you teeth to do anything, like what would happen?
So I guess number six allows us to inspect the property after, to make sure they're in full compliance with the conditions of approval in the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. So if they're not in compliance with, you could add the 60 decibels just to make, if the noise is something you're really worried about, we could add that as part of one of the conditions since it's not specifically in the conditions. But if they were to violate one of the conditions, it could be a recall and review of the permit or that would be the first step, more than likely. We would probably do a nuisance on it to make, to try to get them to go down and make the noise less first. And then if they continue to be in violation, then there would probably be a recall and review of this permit.
And I guess, have we ever done anything where, I'm trying to remember if maybe it's a city thing. We've, no, we don't have any in the city, so maybe it was with Lincoln County where they actually maybe had, the insulation was at a certain R-rating. It was basically a requirement. Have you guys ever done anything like that in the county?
We have not, I do not believe we have ever required anything like that, no.
Okay, because, I mean, the biggest concern that I'm having is that we've got a property right next door that we can say there's no sound that's going to go through. And typically, we've, we've heard a lot of these between Lincoln and Minnehaha County. And typically, I have no problem because they're usually well-spread out, but this building is right next to someone else's property where they live. And if we can't give them, you know, assurance that there's going to be no noise and we really don't have a way to like go after them as there, if there is noise, like, that's where I'm kind of having an issue with this one.
Yeah.
Can I say something? Scott Anderson, Planning Director. So I, I, I understand what you're talking about with insulation, but I think if you look at the bigger picture and you realize they're going to have an outdoor exercise area, nothing you're going to do is going to mitigate noise coming from that outdoor exercise area. And the applicant indicated basically twice a day for 30 to whatever, 45 minutes, there's, they're going to be outside. So there, and we can mitigate a building, but you're never going to mitigate them running around in an exercise area. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, if you're so inclined to restrict the number of animals, I think that it would be prudent to just restrict the number of adult animals. You could say you can't have more than 14 or 16 adult dogs because you're never going to be able to control how many puppies they have. And so that's a slippery slope too of how do you, so I, if you want to, if you want to set a limit on animals, then it should be the adult animals. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him?
Bonnie, can I get the petitioner to come up one more time?
Sure.
You said you do have some other livestock on this site?
Yep.
Okay, are they totally silent 365 days out of the year?
Not exactly. I mean, they, they get a little upset when they're hungry, when it's time to eat, but.
Okay, you answered my question, so there are other animals making noises, so. It's just not dogs.
Okay. Commissioners on the county side?
Madam Chair?
Doug?
I'll make a motion to approve item number two, Conditional Use Permit 22-81.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve Conditional Use Permit 22-81. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Pardon me?
Would your side consider an additional condition of limiting it to 60 decibels at the property line during those quiet hours that are already defined within the other conditions? That would make me more comfortable.
That would be pretty, when he has other animals there, how are you going to pinpoint it that over 60 came from the dogs or the other animals? So that's a pretty gray area.
And I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor on the county side?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on the county side.
City Commissioners, we have an approved motion, number two, on our agenda from the county side. And that is with the six conditions as noted by staff, correct? Just clarifying that. There any action on the city side?
Move for approval for the sake of discussion. Move for approval for the sake of discussion.
Second.
Got a motion for approval for discussion purposes and a second discussion.
Again, I think there should probably be some sort of a decibel limit. There is, you need a certain level of objectivity to be able to measure whether or not that sound mitigation is effective. I think the important part is in those off-hours, not during the day, just so that it doesn't become a nuisance, because a nuisance is pretty easy to say, I'm just irritated, and so therefore it is a nuisance. It really doesn't give the county a lot of authority to be able to expedite a, an adjustment that will make people satisfied, so I think establishing an objective kind of measure to be able to give the county some ability to enforce it would be beneficial to everybody, including the neighbors. So I'm, I'm going to vote against it as it currently sits.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question on the item as it stands, and the motion was with the six conditions as stated, correct? So all in favor of item number two, please signify by saying yes. All opposed, same sign?
Yes.
We have a unanimous denial on the city side.
So Scott, where does that leave us?
I think then it automatically goes to the, it's heard before the elected officials between the city council and the county commission at that January meeting.
Okay.
And it'll go to them with no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other, old business?
No.
Okay, new business? All entertaining motion to adjourn on the county side?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned on the county side.
City Commissioners, they are adjourned on the county side. Do I have a motion on the city side?
Second.
Motion and a second, we are adjourned on the city side. Thank you, everyone.